Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
President.
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you'd remain standing, for one of my favorites for being here is the invocation will be offered by Tamela Carson, representing the Buddhist representative. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll do my best not to make the dog bark.
May we become at all times, both now and forever, a protector for those without protection, a guide for those who have lost their way, a ship for those with oceans to cross, a bridge for those with rivers to cross, a sanctuary for those in danger, a lamp for those without light, a place of refuge for those who lack shelter, and a servant to all in need.
Thank you. Thank you. I always get... She's literally one of my favorites, and she thinks it's because of the dogs. Mostly it is, probably, but she thinks I make the dog bark. I don't know how that happens. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We'll move to agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote if any one member of the council so desires. Any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: work session meetings of April 10 and May 8, 2025, clarification and regular city council meetings of May 1, 2025, special city council town hall meeting of May 13, 2025, and special city council meeting of May 27, 2025. B. Material claims. Council may wish to ratify approval of the material claims for the period of June 1 through 15, 2025, and approve the material claims for the period of June 16 through 30, 2025. C. Treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for April 2025 showing cash and investments as of April 30, 2025. D. Library board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Azrael Reynes to serve as a member of the library board, replacing Jay Bingham, whose term expired. Azrael's term will begin July 4, 2025, and expire July 1, 2030. E. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dr. Grace Jory to continue serving as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Dr. Jory's term will begin July 16, 2025, and expire July 16, 2027. F. Planning and Zoning Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rhonda McHager to serve as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, replacing Eugene Bar two, whose term expired. Rhonda's term will begin July 4, 2025, and expire July 4, 2029. G. City council decision, final plat approval for Hospital View Division One. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the subdivision of approximately 3.669 acres of the 13.3 acre parent parcel of land into four commercial lots. The two common lots generally located east of Portnife Medical Center, subject to conditions H. City council decision, final plat approval for Fairmont Place. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a subdivision of approximately 2.22 acres of land into 13 lots, generally located in the 1100 block of East Poplar Street and 600 block of Franklin Avenue, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda item, agenda item three, as outlined sections A through H.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson, and we have a question by council member Nichols.
If possible, I would like to have item number G moved to a separate vote so that I can abstain. I actually abstained on the vote for that item, so to be consistent.
Okay, the maker of the motion, are you okay removing G out of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second, okay with that still? Okay, we'll do that then. Thank you. Then the motion by Mangan was to approve agenda item through, agenda item three, everything but G. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Abstain.
Are you abstaining from this one or the next one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I messed up. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then council, we have agenda item three, G, in front of us. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda item G, as outlined.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mangan and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Abstain.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item four as a proclamations. We have no proclamations, so we'll move to agenda item five, calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On July 10, 9:00 a.m., city council work session. July 17, at 5:30 p.m., council clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m., regular city council meeting. Other events: July 4, 9:30 a.m., Independence Day Parade in historic downtown Pocatello, and community celebration activities and firework display will be held at the Bennett County Event Center and Portnife Wellness Complex. July 4, city offices will be closed for Independence Day. However, garbage, compost, and recycle pickups will operate as scheduled. July 9 through 19, Southeast Idaho Senior Games. July 12, Firecracker Frenzy Fun Run. Contact the Parks and Recreation for more information. July 28 and 29 is Montana Shakespeare in the Park, 6:00 p.m. at ISU Quad, and that is free to the public. The municipal band concerts continue on Sunday evenings at Ross Park Band Shell from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. through August 3. The concerts are free to the community. As a reminder, there is an open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas, and that continues for the entire summer. Thank you. Then we'll move to agenda item number six is a public hearing, CDBG Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan Amendment. This time it's been set aside for the council to accept comments from the public regarding an amendment to the Program Year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. The amendment would allow for additional, the addition of housing trust funds to the program year. The amendment is reviewed by the CDBG Advisory Committee and recommended for approval. Following the public hearing, council may wish to approve the amendment and authorize the, authorize submission, including any public comments to HUD for submission, okay, including any comments to HUD for approval. I declare the public hearing open. It was tough for me to get through that. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Christine Howe, the grants manager for the city of Pocatello. As described by the mayor, this hearing is the oral comment opportunity for the amendment to the city of Pocatello's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. This amendment would allow the city to add housing trust funds in the amount of $1,050,000 to the PY24 Annual Action Plan for eligible housing activities. The Federal Housing Trust Fund was created by Congress to support the development and operations of housing for households earning 0% to 30% of area median income. Idaho Housing and Finance Association, IHFA, is the appointed administrator of the Federal Housing Trust Fund Program for Idaho, and has determined the best use of HTF funds is for rental housing activities for the 0% to 30% AMI population. The city worked with IHFA staff to identify possible eligible projects, and the highest and best used parcel for the activity that was identified was at 429 Washington Avenue. The HTF grant would provide funding for the demolition of the existing blighted structure, site clearance, engineering and architectural plans for the property, and construction of up to six units on the property. These units would provide long-term leases to residents earning 0% to 30% AMI. This amendment tonight would allow for the HTF grant to be used for eligible housing activities that meet the program requirements. An amendment is required because of HUD regulations. This is considered a substantial change according to the CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, and the project as well as funding source was not included in our original PY24 Annual Action Plan. The housing trust funds would only be used for the eligible activity expenses up to the available funding. This amendment was advertised in a local newspaper, and copies were made available at the Marshall Public Library, Neighbor Works Pocatello, Life, Inc., the Housing Authority, City Hall, and on the city website. The comment period began May 27, 2025, and concludes today. No written comments have been received to date. At the conclusion of the public hearing for the PY24 Action Plan Amendment, the city council may wish to approve the amendment and authorize submission, including any comments to HUD. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Council, any questions we have for... Okay, you mentioned that we had no additional comments in your office. Madam Clerk, have we had any in your office?
No additional.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move to any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. I know that sometimes you like to talk, Christine, but I'm gonna not let you do that anymore right now on this one. We're gonna go ahead. I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you had a wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the CDBG Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan Amendment, as outlined in agenda item six, and submit, and its submission to HUD along with any public comments.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, short plat application, Juniper Heights. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Christopher Higgs, represented by Ensign Engineering and Land Surveying, to subdivide 6.24 acres more or less into four lots. The currently vacant property is located between 2001 and 2211 South Second Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the plat with conditions.
Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number seven, as outlined.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by council member Paulson and a second by council member Mangan. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, short plat application, Frederick Hill Village. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Backyard Properties LLC, represented by Sunrise Engineering, to subdivide 0.36 acres more or less into three lots. The property is located at the northwest corner of South Second Avenue and Frederick Hill Road. Staff recommends approval of the plat with conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item eight, as outlined.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, yes.
Before we move on, I think we need to make a comment about what these two housing developments do to the housing stock shortage we have in our community.
Okay.
These two represent about 160 new doors that'll be open in the next short term, which brings an estimate from our people on staff of there are about 1,000 doors being developed in Pocatello right now, and that should go a long way toward meeting the demand that we have. I saw an economic report that indicates Pocatello, in the latest employment figures, is the fastest-growing city in the state in non-farm employment. We reach 1.2% currently, and most cities are 2/10 or 3/10 of a percent, and it's tremendous what's happening in our city.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. We do have a lot of development happening. It's gonna continue too, so that's neat. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number nine, short plat application, Alameda Commercial Plaza Subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by BV Alameda LLC, represented by Horox Engineering, to subdivide 6.78 acres more or less into four commercial lots. The property is located approximately 900 Yellowstone Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code and with conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of this short plat application for the Alameda Commercial Plaza subdivision, as outlined in agenda item number nine.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by council member Cheatham and a second by council member Mangan. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, final plat application, Stratton Estates, Division Four. Council may wish to approve a final plat application submitted by Wayward Kinghorn Management LLC, represented by Sunrise Engineering, to subdivide 1.12 acres more or less into approximately 12 lots for townhome development. The property is located at 1256 Kinghorn Road, and is zoned residential medium-density single-family RMS. Following a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application with conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item 10, final plat application for Stratton Estates, Division Four, as outlined.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Cheatham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, airport grant application. Council may wish to approve submission of the following grant applications for the FAA Airport Improvement Program, FY2025 Annual Entitlement, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. A, a grant application in the amount of $712,500 for construction of a new taxi lane and facilitate hangar development, and B, a grant application in the amount of $380,000 for pavement maintenance in both the main and overflow parking lots. The grants require a 5% match, which will be funded using the state grant funds and budgeted airport passenger facility charge, PFC funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the FAA Airport Improvement Program 2025 Annual Entitlement Grant Application Submission, sections A, B, and C, or A and B, sorry, of the agenda item 11.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson.
I hope she got that, 'cause I butchered it.
She's good.
She is.
She'll get it. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Airport Bid Acceptance and Construction Agreement. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding this year's Airport Improvement Program, AIP, projects, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. A, accept the lowest responsive bid from Galelim Construction in the amount of $1,070,848.05 for the construction of new taxi lane, and if accepted, B, authorize the execution of the construction agreement, notice of award, notice to proceed, and all other pertinent documents between the city of Pocatello and Galelim in the amount of $1,070,848.05, and C, accept the lowest responsive bid from Straight Stripe Painting in the amount of $565,907.35 for pavement maintenance on taxiway A and runway 1735, and if accepted, B, authorize the execution of the construction agreement, notice of award, notice to proceed, and all other pertinent documents, subject to the city of Pocatello and Straight Stripe, in the amount of $565,907.35, and E, authorize the execution of the work order and all other pertinent documents between the city and Odora to, in the amount of $239,412.26, service provider under the work order with the construction administration of the new taxi lane, as well as grant and contract administration. The projects will be funded with federal AIP and State of Idaho grant funds and budgeted airport PFC funds. The awards and agreements are subject to approval by FAA and acceptance of the grant offers.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport bid acceptances and construction agreements, including your authorization to sign all applicable documents, subject to legal department review, items A through E, as listed in agenda item 12.
Second. We have a motion by council member Cheatham and a second by council member Mangan. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Airport ACDBE Plan. Council may wish to approve an updated Airport Concession Disadvantaged Business Enterprise ACDBE Plan, and authorize any future minor administrative changes to the plan as needed, and authorize the mayor's signature on all acceptable documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the Airport ACDBE Plan, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
I had a second, I think, by council member Paulson before Cheatham, and thanks for attempting the ACDBE acronyms. I don't know why we do that to ourselves, but it's the craziest thing. That being said, we have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, lease agreements, rental, and resolution airport. Council may wish to approve the following lease agreements and adopt corresponding resolutions for the properties at the airport, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. A, a lease agreement renewal with Randy Moore for approximately 9,216 square feet of warehouse space for the purpose of fabrication of off-road vehicles, specialty accessories, and associated storage. The lease term will be five years, and the rental rate will be $1,230.66 per month, and B, a lease agreement with Bravo Six for approximately 1,200 square feet of conference room space for the operation of a flight instruction company. The lease term will be two years, and rental rate will be $1,951 per month, and C, a lease agreement with Idaho Inline Hockey for approximately 3.25 acres of property upon which they will construct and operate an indoor hockey facility. The lease will be for 20-year, for 20-years, term at rental rate of $1 for the first year and $8,125 beginning in year two. All rental rates will be increased annually according to the CPI, with a full review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the lease agreements, renewal, and resolutions for the airport, as listed in the agenda item 14, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. I have to tell you guys, I'm pretty excited about the inline hockey. This is awesome. My daughter grew up working with these guys, and thank you for keeping that alive for kids. This was awesome. Honestly, my daughter's working for Utah Hockey right now because of that, so it's cool. So, thank you. We'll move to agenda item 15, surplus property donation, police department. Council may wish to approve donation of surplus of a surplus emergency vehicle operations training car to the Bennett County Sheriff's Office, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. This vehicle was declared surplus property by the city council on February 6, 2025. The sheriff's office wishes to use the car as a training aid in their pursuit investigation training program.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number 15, as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Nichols and a second by council member Cheatham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, first due contract for fire department reporting software services. Council may wish to operate, or to, council may wish to approve a service contract with first due for software service, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Recent changes in the national reporting requirements necessitate a change in fire reporting software. Funding is available in the fire department and emergency medical services budgets.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item 16, as outlined.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Mangan and a second by council member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, lease agreement resolution, ARC of Bennett County Incorporated. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with ARC of Bennett County Incorporated for property located at 430 Willard Avenue, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the lease agreement and the council resolution with ARC of Bennett County Incorporated, and authorize your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review, as authorized in agenda item 17.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Cheatham and a second by council member Mangan. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, IT Pipes Service Agreement for Water Pollution Control Software Storage, WPC. Council may wish to approve a purchase and service contract agreement with IT Pipes for management of sanitary sewer CCTV data, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. Subscription and implementation of the service in the amount of $23,000 is available in FY2025 WPC budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask you a question before we vote on this?
Absolutely.
If we could ask Levi?
Levi was hoping that he would get a question tonight, so yes. This CCTV, we ought to charge, and we can have people view it, pay-per-view.
Sure, I'm sure. That's what they want to watch. My question...
Adams, WPC superintendent?
My question, Mr. Mayor, is this a new service that we've not had before?
We are changing providers.
Ah.
The original provider, we're having some issue with storage and accessibility. It's tough to get more than one person on it at a time, and it's kind of locking up. The new program seems to be a lot better. We've reviewed it with not only ourselves, the engineering department, but also given their approval on it, because we're, together, we're the ones that use most of it.
Is, if I may, Mr. Mayor...
Absolutely.
Is the price comparable to what we'd been paying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nichols.
Could you explain sort of what this software does and how the whole CCTV system works and why we have it?
It's a hosting program for all of the CCTV footage that we create. Every new subdivision is videoed after it's been installed, and then we continually go out throughout the city and monitor all the sewer lines that we have throughout the city. All of those videos are stored in a server, and this is going to be in a cloud server offsite. And then as somebody comes in and say, hey, we need to, we want to put a new subdivision here, or we want to do some work here, what is the condition of the line? Then engineering can go and grab those videos and take a look and see, and be able to advise developers as they come in, or other people as they need to have. And then also, we use it for our lining program, so we're able to identify problems throughout the city and get those lines fixed.
Great, thank you.
Follow-up, that raises another issue. Do we own the old video from the company before? It's all transferred?
It's just the application to store it and to be able to access it.
So the old video will be in the new system?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all ours.
Thank you.
Tell you what, I've gone and worked out at WPC, and I've had a couple jobs that nobody should ever have to do probably, but this one was kind of interesting, quite frankly, with Hayward there.
Yeah, it started with VHS tapes to discs to hard drives, to now it's a cloud-based service.
No beta?
What's that?
No beta video.
No beta.
Yeah, we were on the forefront there with the VHS. That's right. Thank you, Levi.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda 18 as outlined.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mingham and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 19, WPC Lift Station Pump Purchase, CH Spencer LLC. Council may wish to accept recommendations of staff and approve the purchase of a new Fairbanks pump, submersible motor, and components from CH Spencer LLC in the amount of $67,297.59, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The equipment will replace the existing pump at the McKinley Lift Station. Purchase of the equipment was approved by the City Council at the March 20, 2025 regular City Council meeting. However, the department was unable to purchase the equipment prior to the expiration date of the quote. Funding for the purchase is available in the FY 2025 WPC budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve the WPC Lift Station Pump Purchase, CH Spencer LLC, as outlined in Agenda Item 19.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mingham and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. State and local agreement for Pole Line Road Improvement Project. Council may wish to approve a state and local agreement, SLA, between the Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Pocatello, and adopt a resolution for Pole Line Road Improvement Project, and authorize the match payment of $10,000, which will be applied toward the required overall match for the project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The TAP grant match requirement for this project is 7.34% of the program cost, and funding has been allocated in Fund 70 to cover the expenses.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move for the approval of the state and local agreement for Pole Line Road Improvement Project as outlined in Agenda Item 20.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mingham and a second by Councilmember Cheetham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.